Good evening, viewing public. We are now back in workshop mode at 8:34 PM. This is Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. And we are resuming our budget discussion, which was suspended at 5:30 to prepare for the formal meeting. So Mr. Hansiger is back with us. We did have two members in the queue at the time. So I guess my inclination is to start Mrs. Manning and then Mrs. Wiems to just proceed where we left off. So with that, Mrs. Manning? Mrs. Manning? Why don't we go ahead for now with Mrs. Wiems?
Oh, okay.
We're continuing our questions regarding the budget. Is that correct?
All right, we just transitioned back.
Hello?
Can you hear me, Mrs. Manning?
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can't hear anyone.
I don't hear anyone.
Can someone text her? Ms. Manning, can you hear me? This is... Just like we're working on it.
I don't have audio. I can see the screen.
Just let her know we'll work on that while we proceed with other comments. Okay. So meantime, we'll go ahead with Mrs. Wiems. And we reached out to Mrs. Manning to let her know there's an issue. Okay?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to say again, thanks, Farrell. And like I said, I think three or four weeks ago, I think this is one, if not the best budget that I've been able to present in 18 years. And so, but I just thought it was important earlier for us to listen to all our colleagues and ask questions and make sure we get the numbers and, you know, to compare for now and for future discussions. But you delivered exactly what this board wanted. The priority was loud and clear that it was compensation, compensation, compensation. And so I think that it's one that we can all be very proud of. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm seeing nodding heads. Does that mean Mrs. Manning is back on with us?
She's going to disconnect and reconnect.
Okay. Any other colleagues in the meantime?
Mrs. Rye, I think Farrell had something he wanted to add.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Wiems. But I have to say that my direction and support comes from our superintendent. He's spot on. He understands the budget. He can interpret what they're doing at the state. And so it makes my job much easier when you have a superintendent that understands what you do and appreciates what you do. And I appreciate what he does.
Yes, Dr. Spence, that thanks went to you as well. I'm sorry I didn't include you. Thank you, Farrell. Thank you, your staff.
I did not pay him for that.
And of course, yes. And yes, I saw you all discussing a lot at dinner. Now, thank you, Dr. Spence. Appreciate it.
But while we're waiting for Mrs. Manning, it's just important to note again, and I say this often, but leadership matters. And so collectively, thank you. It, leadership really matters. And it shows with this division everywhere. It's from the top all the way down. Just, it's fabulous. And thank you. I'm really thrilled with this budget, too.
And I just want to echo that I feel this discussion that's still proceeding has been very productive. And we want to have an open forum for colleagues to not just ask questions and offer comments, but sometimes to offer alternatives for us to consider. And even though certain alternatives may not gain traction in a present season, as has been noted, we have an upcoming retreat. And before we know it, there's already, you know, the next budget round begins. And so these important proposals don't die necessarily. And again, it's all healthy discussion. I just want to emphasize that. Mrs. Manning?
She's going to call in.
Oh.
She's still having technical problems. She's going to call in.
Okay. We'll just give it a moment.
Can you check with them again when somebody's talking? Because nobody was talking. They may not have been able to hear anything. You want to see if they can, who can hear now?
So we're reaching out to our Zoom participants to ask them if they can hear us?
Hi, this is Ms. Owens. I can hear you guys. I didn't realize that we were waiting for a call in. Yeah.
I can actually hear now, so it seems to be working.
Yeah, same here.
All right. So now we can...
We need with Mrs. Manning. We'll try this again.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, we're continuing our conversation on the budget, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit more about my proposal. And I've heard some comments that if we don't give all employees the same raise, even if it's, you know, if we give employees 3% and teachers more, that it's, that we're not valuing the employees and that it's disparaging. I disagree with that. I think that if we make our decisions on how we value our employees, then our compensation structure perhaps should change. And maybe we should pay everyone the same wage. Do we value principals more than teachers because they're paid more? Is it inequitable and disparaging that principals make more than counselors or teachers or bus drivers? I don't think that's how we create our pay scale. We're increasing allowances for people with advanced degrees in the superintendent's proposal. Is that disparaging that we're rewarding certain employees who have advanced degrees and not others? I don't think that's really how the board looks at it. So I think that we need to make these decisions based upon what's best for our students and taking into consideration the impact on the people whose pockets we're pulling the money from, the taxpayers. What are the taxpayers thinking when students aren't able to be in school full-time in-person learning, but all employees are getting a 5% raise? We have a national teacher shortage, so there is a need to give teachers more. We talked about market value earlier in the conversation regarding... That's one of the reasons why the clerical staff pay increases on the unmet needs, because they've discovered that we're not paying our clerical staff market value. So I feel very strongly that this should be about compensating in areas where we do need to compensate more to retain the very best, to retain and recruit the very best teachers that we can. This is not about not valuing certain employees over others. And so I take issue with those accusations, and I hope that they'll stop. This is about being competitive in areas. And I've talked to the superintendent offline about this as well. And, you know, hopefully, we can come up with a way to determine what market value we are paying all staff. And if we find that we're underpaying certain staff of certain job categories, then I think we need to address that. So I just wanted to address the issue that I don't value all employees just because I only want to give certain employees a 3% raise, which is much more than our general public is getting, I can guarantee you, in the private sector, if they're even able to maintain their jobs right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Manning. Any other colleagues with comments? So we're at the point of the staff looking for direction. So has anybody not made a comment who chooses to do so? I mean, is a logical standing point to just gauge the support for the present budget proposal? Mr. Farrell, what is...
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. I apologize. Yes, if you could gauge that, because otherwise, we'll have to do the work to try to do all the calculating and what that would cost. And it's quite a bit to do that. And then we'd essentially prepare two separate budget documents for approval so that we're ready to transmit that fairly quickly after your approval next week. It would certainly, I think, we would prefer not to... And when I say we, let's be honest, the budget development staff would prefer not to have to do that work. We'd prefer not to have to ask them to do that double work. If we could get some agreement, it's not on which direction we're going. We know it's not a formal vote, so it's a little awkward. I think it's just a conversation around giving us a little direction.
A bit of a straw poll. I do want to thank, because, Mrs. Manning, I'm not sure if you are privy to some of the comments made during that recent glitch. But both Mrs. Wiems and myself echoed the point that we feel the discussion tonight was a very healthy and productive one. And we want to have a forum where members are free to express their views. And I think different proposals do generate healthy discussion. And so certain proposals or notions that may not gain traction initially, we've already acknowledged certain ones that will be put off for the retreat. And before we know it, there's another budget round coming up. So these are all worthy discussions. And I just want to thank you for the time you've taken to pour through these figures.
So...
So with that, I guess I'm reaching out to colleagues to just gauge, to just indicate where you're at with the present superintendent proposal, if you're here to support that or if you want further discussion or information. So in no, if we can just start with Mrs. Riggs and go, we'll kind of go in a round circle, and then our Zoom members.
I am in full support of what the superintendent is recommending for our budget. I don't feel we need to go with any further information. I think we've been given a lot of information. Thank you all for all you've done.
Okay, Mrs. Felton?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Dr. Spence and his cabinet and his team for all the hard work they've done, and especially taking the patience and time and answering all of our questions. And I agree, if I could, we want to give teachers more. But at this particular time, we're looking out for all of our employees in the budget that Dr. Spence has proposed. I am in agreement with it. As a former Virginia City Public School bus driver, I know some of the concerns of the bus drivers and some of the concerns of some of the other staff, even if we're having conversation with them. But without further ado, dragging it out, I'm very comfortable with this budget. I'm very pleased with it as it's being presented and all the information we've gotten. It's one of the better ones that I've seen that we're pushing forward since I've been on the board. So I am in agreement, and thank you so much, Dr. Spence, your staff, Ms. Hansiger, and all that you've done. And Judy in the background, I appreciate all that you're doing and taking all the questions. And I'm in agreement. Thank you so much.
We'll come back to Mrs. Wiems when she's available. Mrs. Melnich?
You have my blessing. And I thank you for all the time, energy, and hard work that you put into this budget. I think it's important to note that we probably should, as a group, visit Richmond and lobby. Because until, until our legislators really truly understand the importance and the value that teachers bring, you know, we can only do what we can do. And that's the most difficult part. You know, we listen, and we've answered this time with exactly what we can do, and I'm pleased with this budget. But no teacher should have to feel like I did when I left teaching that with three children, I was only working for daycare at that point. And so hopefully, we'll turn a corner at some point. And I thank you again for your hard work.
Mrs. Anderson?
I'm comfortable with the budget as it is written. I look forward to discussions this coming summer at our workshop. And I do feel that we will be able to address some of our needs through working on the pay scale, giving those incentives within the base pay scale. I think that's something that we need to be looking forward to. And I look forward to that this summer. But at this time, I feel like this budget is a good budget. And it does address giving people raises that they so deserve. So thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, and I appreciate it.
Okay. Switching to Zoom, Mrs. Franklin?
I support the budget as it stands.
We'll move on then. Mrs. Holtz?
Mrs. Holtz, you're available to share your input on the proposed budget versus, or any other desire?
All right. How about in the meantime, Ms. Owens?
Thank you. I'm happy with the budget as it stands. I think it's documented. I'm really pleased with. I don't get to say that all that often, that I'm kind of 100% on board with where we're at, given our circumstances. But for this budget, I think that we're addressing as many things as we can, the best way that we can. And I'm looking forward to, like Ms. Anderson said, at our next retreat, kind of looking and seeing what our philosophy as a board is on pay for our employees. And that way, we have that as the standard to build from. Because right now, if it's not defined, we can't build from it. But I'm very happy and I'm very thankful for all the work that went into the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is Mrs. Hughes on or no?
I'm on.
Okay.
Please, please go ahead, Mrs. Hughes.
So I would like to thank the staff for all the time they put into it, because I know, well, I'm sure I don't even know how much work this is, to be honest with you. Additionally, Vicki has put an awful lot of time into this. And I got to say, very few people can parse out a budget like Vicki can. And I think that her recommendation was sound. And I don't think there was any attempt to slight anybody. But we're actually hearing from teachers who say they don't think that they should get more of a raise than anyone else. And I agree with Ms. Owens' point about how we're talking about mental health. And so I wouldn't want, you know, the school counselors to be left out of this. And that's a very valid point. And that actually was something I had not thought about until you said that. But you are correct. So if, you know, if even the teachers are on board advocating for everybody getting the same, then that's what we should do.
Thank you. Do we have Mrs. Holtz on now? Okay, Mrs. Holtz?
I'm very delighted with the budget. I think it's one of the better ones we've had recently. And I want to thank everybody that had their hand in putting this together. I don't plan on, I don't suggest any changes. I'm happy with the way it is.
Thank you. Mrs. Wiems?
We've just gone round, we're going round circle back to you. I mean, I think I've said everything. I'm excited. This is a very good budget. And our employees should be excited. And I know they are, because we've already heard from them. And I know that they will be appreciative. And it's something that we should be very proud to present to city council and to our community. I am looking forward to, like folks have said at the retreat, for us to really get down and discuss budget philosophy, you know, whether we want a market value of all staff, all different levels and departments and groups, and really decide as a group how we're going to tackle this in the future. Because I do think those who brought forth different proposals or different ideas, because that's very good and that's very healthy for us to discuss. And I look forward to future discussion around those proposals. But again, thanks, everybody. And it's an exciting time. And I look forward to presenting this. And hopefully, city council will have thumbs up for it also. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Manning, any additional thoughts or comments you wish to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anything I wish to say has been said. But I'll just state for the record that I do support this proposed budget. But again, I am grateful for the productive discussion we've had over the course of these past few weeks and the board member questions and the commitment that all my colleagues understand. This is one of the most important commitments we have as a school board. And I'll leave it at that. Okay. So go ahead now, Mr. Hansiger. What next?
Thank you. We have our marching orders. We thank you so much. I would like to say, and I don't get to say this often, you know, I have a staff that they hung in there with me. I mean, we were doing remote work. And we had some in the building and in remote work. Some of us were in different states. They just have been super people, hardworking professionals. And I have to say, I appreciate everything that they've done. The senior staff, it was a team effort because they helped us providing the input and the details that we needed. And obviously, Dr. Spence providing the leadership and the support. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate everything that you've said tonight. And we will get this thing all wrapped up. And we'll do our due diligence. And we'll check everything. And we'll have you a resolution on the 2nd of March.
Exactly seven days from tonight. And while I'm thinking of it, we need to establish a start time. We've been going with 5:00 for these special meetings. Is that, I'm getting head nods? Okay. And so that the public has a little advance notice, too. Of course, there'll be an official posting. But for anybody, the viewing public, you get a heads up on that. Any final thoughts from you, Dr. Spence?
No, ma'am. Just echoing Farrell's praise for his team and for the whole group that, you know, budget development, the PPMC got to learn over the last year a lot more about budget development, probably, than some of them were aware of what goes on kind of behind the scenes with the whole team of people who get engaged with the budget development staff to bring forward the needs of the division and represent the needs of the schools and of staff. So just a continued great process here in Virginia Beach, one that we're nationally recognized for on a year-in and year-out basis and certainly attributable to the leadership of our CFO. So we appreciate all of that. And we still have another workshop.
Yes, we do. Okay. So that does bring us to, let me get it officially right here. 2020-21 Plan Updates. So it was a big day today. And I'm sure we'll hear a little bit about that as well with our secondary students' Option 1 returning. So welcome, Dr. Robertson.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Regina, can you... So good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnich, members of the board, Dr. Spence. Tonight, we will be, again, providing updates for the board and the community on our continuing efforts to support students and staff with both virtual and in-person instruction. I'll begin this workshop presentation with a review of our return of Option 1 students in grades 7 through 12 to in-person learning, information on Monday professional learning for staff, a brief review of new guidelines released earlier this month by the CDC. And then, as has been our custom, we'll review the percent positivity trend for the eastern region. Next, I'll provide an update on our plans for middle school and high school athletics, as well as for the resumption of extracurricular activities with the return of secondary students. I'll then turn the presentation over to Mr. Freeman to provide updates on the work of our safety inspection teams and vaccination efforts. And he will be followed by Dr. Rogers, who will be providing a thorough update on our summer school planning efforts. We will then be ready to answer any of your questions. Today, we welcome back 7th grade. And 7th grade, Thursday and Friday will be 8th grade. And students in grades 9 through 12 with last names A through K to in-person learning. Here, you'll see a collage of some pictures from today. And I'm pleased to announce that early indications from what I've heard back from my team and their visits to schools are that the day went smoothly across all of our middle schools and high schools. Here, you can see how Kellum and First Colonial staff as two examples, welcomed back staff and students. And not pictured, Cox High School fed their staff with a breakfast to go to welcome them back today, as well as had special programs for their students. Teachers are concurrently, are currently utilizing Mondays for a variety of purposes. Some of those include providing small groups synchronous instruction to identify students, planning for concurrent... planning for concurrent instruction, which occurs Tuesday through Friday, and particularly for those teachers in grades seven through twelve who are new to that. They support students via office hours. Principals hold weekly staff meetings to share recent updates or changes to practice. And staff participate in professional learning, coaching, and data analysis. Just yesterday, we had over nine hundred teachers participate in either a session with Dr. Doug Reeves on effective grading and feedback, or the division-led trauma-informed symposium. Two powerful learning experiences this number of teachers would never have been, had the opportunity to enjoy in any prior school year. Recognizing this topic continues to come up for the school board, I thought I would share just a few challenges that are changed to five days a week at this time we would need to address. They include revisions to the hybrid schedule at middle school and high school, and a revision to the schedule at elementary. Currently, at high school and middle school, students attend two days per week. If moving to a fifth day would make, result in a schedule change. A loss of Mondays to a fifth day of learning would affect our option two students that we have chosen to bring in on Mondays when no other students are in the school to do things like take the PSAT, SOL, and AP exams. It also, also would significantly reduce teacher planning time at a time when teaching in this environment is still a brand-new concept and one that was not covered in any teacher prep program or any previous professional learning program. However, we do acknowledge that students would benefit from more in-person learning opportunities, particularly our students with disabilities, our second language learners, and our youngest students. Our leadership team continues to discuss planning for a return to five days of in-person learning. And before finalizing any decision, we would want to seek further input from principals and teachers to determine the best path forward. As shared by Dr. Spence with the board at your most recent school board meeting, the CDC updated their guidance on February twelfth for safely operating schools. The overall theme of the updated guidance is that K-12 schools should be the last settings to close after all other mitigation measures in the community have been employed, and the first to reopen when they can do so safely. The guidance continues to list the same two measures of community burden, i.e. seven-day rolling average for number of new cases per one hundred thousand persons and percent positivity. The guidance acknowledges that the transmission level for any given location will change over time and should be reassessed weekly for situational awareness and to continuously inform planning. However, the guidance continues to emphasize that decisions should be guided by information on school-specific factors such as mitigation strategies implemented, local needs, stakeholder input, the number of cases among students, teachers, and staff, and school experience with safely reopening. Most importantly, the guidance continues to emphasize, emphasize the same five key mitigation strategies to address COVID-19 transmission in schools. Universal incorrect use of masks, physical distancing, handwashing and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, contact tracing and collaboration with the local health department. And as this graph, graphic illustrates, the effectiveness of the mitigation strategies is their use in combination with one another. This is a graph of the seven-day moving average for percent positivity for the eastern region since the start of January, as reported online by the Virginia Department of Health and linked from our division website. As shown on the graph, the seven-day moving average was eighteen point four percent at the start of the new year and increased to a high of twenty-one point seven percent on January sixth. Since that time, the percent positivity has steadily declined to a rate of sixteen point one percent at the end of January, and now again to its current rate of twelve point four percent. I want to thank the board for displaying trust in my team's ability to create a safe environment for our winter athletes to compete. And I'm happy to share that ninety-five of our ninety-nine winter sports programs completed their respective season. Virginia Beach crowned state championships in girls' basketball, as well as individual champions in wrestling. We had multiple teams finish second in the state and multiple individuals earned all-state honors. In summary, our winter varsity sports season was a success. Fall varsity sports are underway, with football slated to play their first games on Friday night. The remaining teams are practicing now and will have their first contests as early as next week. Thus far, we have had no programs placed on pause and only a handful of positive cases. The health mitigation strategies we used for the winter season remain in place. And not surprisingly, everyone is getting better and more comfortable with meeting these expectations. A hot-button issue is whether to allow spectators to attend outdoor sporting events. Last week, the governor declared outdoor events could have as many as two hundred and fifty spectators. Dr. Spence, as he has throughout the pandemic, directed my team to investigate if we could safely allow for spectators to attend our outdoor events. I then convened my team to include Mary Shaw, and we brought forth a recommendation he has now approved to allow for spectators, per the governor's order, to attend our fall outdoor sports. That includes football, field hockey, cross-country, and golf. Given this work was just completed and just approved yesterday, we are not ready to allow spectators for our first football games on Friday. Spectators will not be allowed to attend these games only. We will have our plans in place and spectators will be allowed to attend our fall outdoor sports beginning on March first. As we have prior to each season, my team is also working on revisions to spring preseason conditioning. So these teams will have time to prepare for their upcoming seasons and not interfere with the fall sports teams. Finally, as we've, we have done throughout, our number one goal was to find the best plan to allow our varsity athletes the chance to have a season and to do so as required canceling middle school and JV sports. We are announcing today this will continue, as we will not be having a spring JV or middle school season three and four sports this year. We are also announcing that schools can begin offering extracurricular programming in the in-person setting. Like with athletics, there will be established health and safety protocols to follow. And we are confident in our staff and students' ability to meet these requirements so that they can have a chance to do something they love. One important note for the board to hear is not all schools will be able to offer the same programming. This is due to factors such as access to students in the class setting and variables such as students who play a fall or a spring sport and also participate in arts program like band, chorus, and theater. In the end, our schools are committed to providing as many opportunities as possible for students to participate in these programs. We have and will continue to offer various clubs. Many have been meeting virtually, and this will continue, although I imagine some clubs will introduce an in-person option. In any circumstances, when students and staff are gathering in person, they will be expected to adhere to all health and safety mitigations. At this point, no decisions have been made on special end-of-year events like graduation, ring dance, prom, senior day, et cetera. Those decisions will be made over the next couple of months and will be shared with the board at the appropriate time. And now I will turn the presentation over to Jack Freeman, our chief operations officer.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. And welcome, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Robertson. Just two short updates for tonight. First, with secondary schools being back in the hybrid model as of today, our COVID safety assessments will be focused on the secondary schools for the next two weeks. By the end of next week, all schools will have received at least one assessment. We continue to receive positive feedback regarding implementation of our mitigations, mitigations like wearing masks, distancing in classrooms, and availability of hand sanitizer for proper hand sanitizing and hand hygiene are all positive. And we're paying attention to areas for improvement. Vaccinations continue to go well. Virginia Beach Department of Public Health is now, has over nine thousand of our fifteen thousand Virginia Beach City Public Schools employees in a vaccine management system. And over the past two weeks, we're receiving fewer than about a hundred requests per week. Additionally, the number of employees that are reaching out to the Office of Safe Schools to work through challenges has diminished substantially. I'm going to pause here and express my appreciation for the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health and the city for their efforts. Several times recently, I've thought back to mid-January and the uncertainty surrounding vaccine availability and timelines back in the mid-January timeframe. If someone had told me then that by the fourth week in February, Virginia Beach City Public Schools would have nine thousand employees vaccinated with the first dose and thousands more already having their second dose, I wouldn't have believed them. So despite some challenges, the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health and the city have done an extraordinary job with implementing the system that we have here in Virginia Beach. The last bullet that I want to talk about won't have a significant impact on our employees, but I want to share for your awareness. I told you weeks ago that the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health had transitioned from the VAMS vaccine management system to PrepMod. Overall, PrepMod is a better system and corrected many of the challenges of working in VAMS. However, there was one significant flaw in the PrepMod software. And without going into great detail, the result is that moving forward, new requests are going to be entered into the VAMS system. So for all those that are already in VAMS, they're going to be in VAMS. For those that are already in PrepMod, they're in there. So you don't need to do anything if you're already in there. But for the new requests, people that are newly indicating their preference, they'll be entered into the VAMS system. Again, that's just for your information, just in case you hear anything from your constituents that you're aware of what the process is and where we are moving forward. And any questions and challenges should continue to be directed to Safe Schools and their email address. And that's turned into a very effective process to be able to, to address any challenges that come our way. So with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, and welcome, Dr. Rogers.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Good evening, Chairman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. This evening, I will provide you with a comprehensive update on where we are with our planning for summer learning opportunities for our students. And I want to take the liberty to say thank you to the interdepartmental collaboration that has taken place since December in planning for all of our students' summer learning opportunities. So as we do in all years, we do consider many factors that are associated with planning for summer learning opportunities to be able to accelerate student learning and to get them closer to where we'd like them to be at the start of the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And this year, we focused on providing opportunities for all of our students, face-to-face and virtual, in order to work towards ensuring their success. So for elementary, we've identified three opportunities for summer learning for our students. Summer Learning Boost for all students. We utilized this support last year and we've improved upon the resource and will continue to use it. As we've done in the past, we will continue to offer Summer Learning Camp at select sites. And lastly, we will work with our schools to allow them the opportunity to offer summer tutoring and learning for students at their respective schools. And I'll share more about Summer Learning Boost for our students. Pre-K five students currently enrolled in VBCPS for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year will be able to access our VBCPS Summer Learning Boost website that contains weekly numeracy and literacy lessons throughout the month of July via ClassLink. Each week, we will release new lessons so that students can log on and click on a lesson that they'd like to do, which will reinforce skills and concepts from the previous school year in order to ensure that they have the opportunity for additional review before entering the next grade level. The lessons are aligned, engaging, and asynchronous so that they can be viewed and completed at any time that fits into the students' families' schedule. In addition, parent videos are posted each week to explain the learning intentions and focus on each lesson so that parents understand what the purpose of the learning is and that they can also extend the learning in other ways. In addition to providing all families with access to high-quality lessons via our Learning Boost website, schools will also be providing virtual students who qualify for the Summer Learning Camp additional layers of support such as tutoring, check-ins, or review lessons. We're also planning to provide schools with funds to offer their entire school community a few additional school-based learning opportunities over the summer that school administrators will design and that are based on the needs and interests of their students and their families. And as you are aware, each year, select schools offer a Summer Learning Camp experience for qualifying students. This summer, we will, we'll be able to expand the program to offer face-to-face at additional sites. We'll also slightly extend the hours to include a full literacy and numeracy block. Typically, the program that's, the program has been designed to prevent what some researchers refer to as summer slide, and it focuses primarily on reading instruction for students in grades K through two who qualify. And that's also offered at select sites and at all of our Title I elementary schools. This year, we're pleased to share that we'll offer it at more sites and include students in grades kindergarten through five. And additionally, we're even able to offer some of the program, some programs to select students in pre-K. While we maintain a strong focus on academics and accelerating learning, we also recognize that our students may also need to have a social, emotional support and learning opportunities while in the program. So therefore, we plan to hire a counselor for each site to provide, to provide SEO support as well as lessons throughout the program. The Summer Learning Camp will also engage students in hands-on inquiry-based lessons related to science and social studies. Now, transition to middle school. The team has identified several opportunities for summer learning for middle school students. The first of which is traditional summer school, summer reading intervention, summer learning boost similar to what we have for elementary, tutoring and learning, and summer learning camp and STEM camp for our Title I students. The middle school summer program will be held face-to-face and virtually and is designed for students in grades six through eight who have not yet met middle school promotion standard during the regular school year and will be held at Brandon and Corporate Landing Middle Schools. The promotion standard requires that students pass five classes in language arts, mathematics, science, social studies, health and physical education, and electives in order to be promoted to their next grade level. Students who need to successfully repeat only one or two of the required courses to be eligible for promotion to the next grade level should attend summer school. Those students may take a maximum of two repeat courses during the summer. However, only one course per session may be taken. The middle school summer reading intervention program has been offered for several years, and that's designed for students who are one to two lexile levels below reading level. And typically, that program was for students in grades seven and eight. And in the current climate, the need to expand that program to rising sixth-grade students is necessary. So we'll offer that to rising middle school students. And they'll have the ability to begin the transition to the middle school while accelerating their reading skills. Students will receive instruction in several key areas, areas such as vocabulary development, reading comprehension and writing in response to texts that they read. The Department of Teaching and Learning will work with elementary school principals to identify students that should be recommended for that opportunity, this opportunity. And in the past, this has been optional for families to enroll. And we believe it will be important to work with our families in order to ensure that students who meet the criteria take full advantage of this opportunity. And the next opportunity I'll talk about is the Summer Learning Boost for our secondary students. Summer Learning Boost for secondary students is also what we're referring to as summer bridge courses that are designed specifically for students to take during the summer before enrolling in the fall courses. The step-up middle school courses that you see listed on the slide, and it's in the orange font, will consist of ten lessons that can be done asynchronously, and they'll be monitored and supported by a teacher. Each teacher will be expected to monitor progress, provide daily feedback, and offer two one-hour synchronous office hour sessions. Each prep course listed, and that's just below on Y. Each prep course listed, and that's just below in white font, will be delivered asynchronously and will also be monitored and supported by a teacher. Each teacher will be expected to monitor progress, provide daily feedback, and offer two one-hour synchronous office hours. Prep courses will have twelve lessons in science and fifteen lessons in mathematics. The purpose of those lessons is to build up the skills that are necessary for success in the course that they will be enrolled in for the 2021-22 school year, thus building student confidence that they need to succeed in those courses. And the next three opportunities for middle school students, summer tutoring and learning, in addition to providing all students with access to high-quality lessons via the Learning Boost step-up and prep courses, we are also planning to provide each secondary school with summer learning funds to design a program that's customized for their student population to provide learning opportunities that are available for all of their students to have access if needed in addition to the summer boost lessons that are supported by our teachers. Students in our Title I middle schools have the opportunity to participate in Summer Learning Camp and STEM camp. So for high school, we have several opportunities that will be made for those students. The high school summer face-to-face program will be held at Cox and Kellum High Schools. These programs provide credit courses for high school students to either accelerate their program of study, recover course credit to stay on track for graduation, or to repeat courses that were not successfully completed during this regular school year. Repeat course offerings are taught synchronously or live through Schoology by VBCPS teachers. These online repeat courses are one session each. They're based on guidance from parent and student and school counselor input so that students may be enrolled in either a face-to-face or a virtual option, and that will depend on that level of success that the student have during the regular school year. Students with disabilities who receive special education services supports in the general education setting and are English language learners who receive support in the general education setting will have the opportunity to attend summer school face-to-face for support. Our students enrolling in a credit-bearing course for the first time must complete two session... A two-session summer program that is the equivalent of one year of instruction in the regular school term in order to receive full credit. Our students repeating a course that they have previously failed may earn credit by completing a one-session summer course. Our credit recovery courses for students who need to catch up for graduation or acceleration courses for students who are trying to get ahead are offered asynchronously on demand through the Virginia Beach Digital Campus. These online courses are taught in the two-summer session format for first-time takers. All course offerings are, of course, dependent upon sufficient enrollment and the availability of certified endorsed instructors. Virtual Virginia continues to be an option for our students who may need an accelerated course that's not offered through the Virginia Beach Digital Campus, and registration for those courses begins on April first. Relative to summer boosts, as I shared earlier, the summer boost courses do assist students in being prepared for courses next year, and each preparatory course will be delivered asynchronously and will be monitored with support by a teacher. Summer tutoring and learning, in addition to providing all students with access to high-quality lessons via our Learning Boost prep courses, we're also planning to provide each high school with a summer learning funds to be able to design a program and provide learning opportunities that are available to students at their school and then have access so that they have access to any needed support throughout the summer. Some examples of ways in which those funds might be used include virtual and face-to-face tutoring for large groups of students in advanced placement courses or virtual and face-to-face learning mini-camps for students to promote success for the 2021-22 school year. Students will also have summer opportunities for TCE courses. There'll be a fast-track tutoring and testing for wise financial literacy. We're also planning Skills Trades Summer Institutes in order to support programs that require additional hands-on practice for skills development for areas such as welding or cosmetology. We're also planning opportunities for industry credential and state licensure testing for students who participate in programs at the Advanced Technical Center, Technical and Career Education Center, as well as programs in our comprehensive high schools. For students with disabilities, the majority of students with disabilities receive most of their special education services in the general education setting. Therefore, many of our students with disabilities will have the opportunity to participate in the general education summer programs that are offered by the division. Any recovery services or supports that are required for participation in those programs will be determined by the IEP team, and services and supports will ensure access to the general curriculum. And relative to extended school year ES or ESY. ESY services are special education and/or related services that are provided beyond the typical school year. And consideration of ESY services is part of the IEP process, and the IEP team must determine whether the benefits... Must determine whether the benefits that the students gained during the regular school year will be significantly jeopardized if the student does not receive ESY services. So some of the factors to be considered when determining the need for ESY include regression or recruitment of skills that were lost, any degrees of progress or emerging skills or breakthrough opportunities that they had, any interfering behaviors that prohibit progress, the nature and/or severity of the disability itself, and any special circumstances or other factors that the team may determine might be needed. So if ESY is determined to be required, these services come at no cost to the parent. They will absolutely vary in type, intensity, location, inclusion of related services, month of time, and depending upon the individual student's needs. ESY services may be delivered through a variety of settings and methods, and it is considered a continuum of service services. The IEP team will determine the setting, the method that's based on the needs of the student. And ESY services could look like skills maintenance activities or packets, consultative services, as well as tutoring. Students with disabilities could also receive classroom-based ESY services at school cluster sites. So for the summer of 2021, there will be eight elementary school cluster sites and one high school cluster site that will service students in middle and high school. And for CSEP elementary students, will receive ESY services at one of our elementary cluster sites or at the Renaissance Academy. And then lastly, for our English learners, there will be three summer learning pathways for elementary English learners. The first will be available to all English learners at all levels of English proficiency. The Summer Learning Boost asynchronous math and English language arts lessons are available at each grade level. Similar to last summer, these lessons will be translated and delivered in Spanish for Spanish-speaking families to access at home. The next pathway is specific to elementary English learners whose English proficiency level is 1.0. This summer program will provide English learners who meet the criteria with an intensive four-week language learning experiences... Experience with ESL teachers. This program will meet the needs of approximately 250 of our elementary English learners across all elementary schools and will focus on accelerating their proficiency in English reading, writing, listening, and speaking. There will be two designated sites, one at each end of the city, in order to accommodate that program. And then finally, those elementary English learners with language proficiency level of 2.0 and higher and who are zoned for one of the thirty-nine Summer Learning Camp schools and are invited to participate based on the criteria set, they will benefit from the four-week program, which includes small Greek reading and math instruction. Similar to the elementary level, they are three summer learning pathways for our secondary English learners, the first of which is the Summer Learning Boost asynchronous lessons that are available to all students. These will be accessible to students at home on their own time. The second pathway is the ESL Summer School Program that we offer each year for English learners. And while this program is usually targeted for learners with proficiency levels between 1.0 and 2.5, last summer, we extended it to learners with proficiency levels up to 2.9 and will continue to do so this summer. This four-week program aims to accelerate students' proficiency in English reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And then finally, English learners who need credit recovery will be identified to participate in the appropriate summer credit recovery classes. English learners will be encouraged to register for those classes in person as in-person instruction is most effective for English learners. And that concludes the information that I have to share relative to the summer programming. And at this time, we all will be interested in answering any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you. That's a lot to chew on, and we will take one colleague at a time. So we're beginning with Mrs. Melnick.
Well, first of all, Dr. Rogers, that... That deserves a standing ovation. I... I mean, a mic drop, like, like, I'm not kidding. That... I don't mind being the only one who claps. I have never been more impressed, ever. It is February twenty-third. We are still in a pandemic, and we have the most robust summer school program already outlined. It... I've never seen anything like it, and you're ready to start registration on April first. So again, I will repeat myself, leadership matters, and you guys should all be incredibly proud. I am so proud to be sitting here right now.
Well, thank you, and I'm hoping that the team is listening because...
I hope they're listening.
Have done a fantastic job since December.
I... And if they're not, please make sure tomorrow they know. Um, my second comment, um, I just had three quick ones. Um, yesterday, Senate Bill thirteen oh three passed. Um, and it is a plan that outlines the next school year, which I don't even want to touch the next school year yet, but I just want to say again, leadership matters because we already meet the requirements for Senate Bill thirteen oh three, which technically has a sunset clause, um, of at the end, in August of the end of the school year. So kudos again to this team, um, for being prepared. Um, and the last one is just kind of from my heart to the parents who were hoping and praying to be able to see their high school athletes, um, at their opening games this weekend. Um, I am the mom of two college baseball players, luckily on the same team, and their university does not allow fans yet, and it is painful. I understand it. I had... They played today. I could not... For this reason, I could not be there, but they have a home... Their home opener is this weekend, and I cannot be there to cheer them on as much as I want to. But we were able to travel to Charleston this past weekend where they are allowing two... Two spectators per student. So another example of other universities who are doing it already and a few who still are not. And so I just ask our parents to just be patient for one more week, and, um, we'll get you back out there. And, um, and I do feel your pain, so it doesn't go, you know, unnoticed, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Weems?
Yes, okay, I've got a couple for summer school, and then I'll wait, um, and then I've got a couple about athletics for Dr. Robertson. Okay, so the Learning Boost, Dr. Rogers, that's K through five in the month of July.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so just the month of July. Is that five days?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so five?
It's asynchronous, so it's, um... There are no days associated with it.
Okay, but you're kind of... Like, you can, like, if I have a child in fourth grade, I can get on there every Monday through Friday and do something to boost.
You can do it on the weekend.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, so that's in the month of July. Okay, and then the summer learning camps that are in person, K through five, right? Now, if that's not at your school, you just go and you qualify, you just go to the nearest school?
So they have specific sites that are associated, I believe, that thirty-nine sites, and they've divided, um, those schools appropriately.
Okay, and transportation is provided?
Yes, ma'am.
And is that four or five days a week?
That is... It follows the traditional schedule. I believe it's four days a week.
Four days? And how many hours? It looked by the minutes, is it about three hours a day?
So we are increasing the, um, the time period by approximately an hour. I know we're still working that out with transportation, um, and it... The time has increased to allow for more time for the literacy and numeracy block this year.
Okay, so how many hours a day?
Uh, we started with four point five and may scale back to like four point two five. Uh, I need to double check with...
So around four hours.
My staff with that. That's a new development this week.
Okay, and that is, um, the... Yeah, there was so much information. Thank you. I took notes, but... And so the summer learning camp is for how long?
The summer learning camp is four weeks.
Okay, so that's four weeks also. Okay. Okay, now, as far as on the high school level, I didn't see this just like traditional summer schools. Say I'm a student and I just want to take my senior English in summer. Am I going to still be able to do that?
To get ahead, yes, ma'am.
Or to even graduate early?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I can still take the... Just the regular summer classes?
Yes, ma'am.
Summer school classes. Okay. Um, let me see here. Okay, I think I'm going to save my athletic questions until my colleagues have a chance. Thank you so much. That was very thorough. Um, I'm going to review it some more, but it looks like you pretty much covered every single boost and student and grade level and learning difference that we can imagine. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Manning?
Thank you. So, thank you for the update, Dr. Robertson and Dr. Rogers. Um, for the outdoor spectators, Dr. Robertson, I've gotten a lot of messages and phone calls on that. Um, you said that outdoor spectators will be allowed at outdoor events beginning March first. Can you give me some more details on how many? Is it going to be based upon, um, per child or is there a total number?
Yeah, so, uh, this is an important point.
We can allow two hundred and fifty spectators. So let's just talk about football, for example. Each player will receive two passes. We'll give a hundred passes to the visiting team, a hundred and fifty passes to the home team. We're going to maximize the use of those passes for students. It is highly unlikely there'll be any passes for parents to attend football games with spectators at two hundred and fifty because we want to give our band, our chorus, our step team, our cheerleaders, and any other student groups the opportunity to attend those football games. With field hockey and cross-country and golf, this number of spectators is much less, so we're not concerned about the two hundred and fifty, uh, person limit. So as a parent, if I have a child who plays field hockey or cross-country or golf, there's a strong chance I can get out there and see them play because, again, we're not talking about the same numbers on the team for field hockey, for cross-country, or for golf. Now, to ensure parents do have the opportunity to see their kids, we are doing Senior Day where senior parents will get the opportunity to attend, uh, the senior game, um, celebration for their student, so... So does that answer your question, Ms. Manning?
So just to clarify, students are going to be able to attend football games, but parents of the athletes won't?
The... The students will get two...
Tickets, and if that student decides to give mom and dad the two tickets, those parents will be able to attend.
So will, say, a football player get two tickets?
Tickets, the player, the athlete themselves?
Yes, the athlete themselves will be given the two...
Tickets to... Uh, give to whomever they wish.
All right, so parents can attend that way through their athlete who's playing?
Correct. If they're... Give mom and dad tickets.
The girlfriend and their best friend. So I'll leave that to...
That wasn't whatever that, or they might not be playing the game. Um, and then one other question about the extracurriculars. Um, I know that you said it sounds like it's going to be site-based based upon what activities they're going to have if, um, the community or... If, um, the community or parents or, uh, want to know what's going to be offered, should they contact their individual schools?
Yes.
It happened.
Okay, and that's it all. Back to elementary, middle, and high?
Particularly with the extracurricular activities that we're really talking about middle school and high school. But yes, elementary school will have some activities as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, for the record, Mrs. Manning wasn't the only one confused, Dr. Robertson. Somehow it didn't get conveyed that way the first go-around.
Yeah, I think it's worth repeating because I'm worried if some folks heard that, you're going to get emails that you should, you don't need to get. Uh, it is worth repeating. Parents of our athletes, including our football athletes, will get, well, our athletes will get two passes per. And if that athlete gives the two passes to their parent, and that's a conversation mom and dad can have, or he wants to give them to his girlfriend, whatever, those two passes per player will be allowed to attend. It will not be more than that because we are prioritizing the other students who participate in activities in our stadiums. For example, cheer and band, which count per the VHSL guidelines and the governor's order into that total attendance. So we will have those groups have some opportunities to participate, but each athlete will also have two passes per. So we want to make that clear because I, I heard it myself, and I was even like, I don't think we said that right. So, yeah, no, yes.
If, if I may though, to be clear, so for the cheerleaders and the band who are there to support the players, they're not being provided the passes.
That's correct.
Just so we're clear on that, the players are being provided the passes.
And those were the parents that he was referring to who wouldn't be able to attend the event. It's for those athletes because we have, we have to, I mean, if we're going to allow the players' parents to attend and those students to participate, we will not have space beyond that in our football programs to, uh, we'll go above the two hundred and fifty, um, spectator limit that's been imposed by the governor.
And, and I think it's important that we, that it is pointed out, there is a visiting team who's entitled to the same courtesy, and that would be extended to us as visiting team as well.
Well, it's all beach schools playing each other, yes.
So that's what really halves the number technically and why. If it was just the one team, right, probably every cheerleader and band person could invite their parents, but there are two teams involved, so the numbers have to be split in half.
That's correct.
I, I mean, it just helps people understand better.
And we will be communicating about this. We wanted to talk with you all about this tonight. And then we will be communicating about this, but one of the reasons we can't do this Friday night, which is the only, it's the only event, it's Friday night's games. Beyond that, the rest of the games begin next week, and we'll be able to accommodate, is there's just too many small details that we need to work out and communication that needs to go out about that, and we simply don't have the time. So we, we appreciate everybody's patience and grace on that particular topic. We know there'll be a few folks who will contact us upset about that, but there will be more than one game, and we will make sure that, uh, that moving past this Friday night, folks will be able to attend as we're describing.
And this Friday night's game will be streamed, and that process is improving. So they'll be able, if they've subscribed to the streaming service, they'll be able to see the game.
Well, that's important to know, too. Okay. All right, Mrs. Anderson, and then Mrs. Felton.
So my question has to do with the band, and I, and I'm glad we clarified that, uh, with the band being able to participate. Um, also, um, I know that you received some communication this week, you and I together. And I, I passed it on to our chair about, um, the fine arts. Um, drama and singing, et cetera. So has there been anything else that you can enlighten us on about the fine arts? Uh, because for some of our students, um, they really look forward to plays and concerts and things like that. Uh, has there been any thought to outdoor concerts, for example, maybe instead of indoor concerts, where some of the fine arts students could participate that way? And even chorus, that type of thing, if, if they maybe did it outdoors instead of indoors, maybe, maybe could we accommodate it that way? So could you enlighten us a little bit more about the fine arts?
So, uh, you make a great point. What, the schools are going to exhaust all of their efforts to provide students the opportunities that they love to do. Um, outdoor concert or an outdoor band event. Um, there are guidelines in terms of whether or not you can have a competition. But to have an outdoor concert, there's still be, going to be some guidelines we're going to have to follow. But the schools are going to look for opportunities to allow their kids the chance, again, to participate in something, an extracurricular activity, a fine art, a play, et cetera, that they really love to do.
Right.
Um, but what's important is each school may be a little different in terms of what they provide because of some of the things that I mentioned. For example, some of our schools had all of their band students in Term One classes. And so in Term Two, their band director is not seeing their students during the school day. The only chance they'd be able to get their band students together would be in the after-school times. Depending on what those kids are doing, because many of them do other things, that may or may not make a putting together a full marching band possible. However, you might be able to put a drum line together. You might be able to put a trombone session, section together. You might be able to put a small ensemble together with a choral group and do something. And so those are the things we're going to look to do, which is why parents should, if they have questions about individual programming, go directly to the school.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Felton?
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. I'd just like to say what a robust, um, program some of the you're putting forth. And yes, I began a lot of conversation from the community as to how this is going to go forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Especially with, you know, some of the concern with learning lost and those students that, some of them that seem to have gotten waylaid uh, in the process. Uh, but my concern is I'm looking at all this, uh, the learning that's going forward. Uh, who will be our instructors? Will it be our regular teachers? Are we getting volunteers? And it's a two-part question.
Uh, we are planning to employ VP CPS teachers.
And with that said, uh, I've had, uh, a lot of conversation with community partners, uh, faith-based and other special education, which, uh, has put an interest in being partners with us and getting this done, so they make sure that all of the students are addressed. So are we looking at that or are we covering it all the way?
So, no, we're never always covered, especially in the summertime. So we, you know, we certainly are looking to partner with, with outside entities as well. One of the, um, one of the aspects of the planning is to provide all of our schools with funds to create programs that are unique to their individual schools. So that could be an opportunity for, for individual schools to partner with outside entities to help support some of the, uh, programming that they'd like to take place in their school. We're going to give them some, um, guidance with what that might look like or could look like. But certainly, we are looking to our individual schools to be creative and thinking about ways in which they can support their individual students at their schools.
Okay, and, and in other words, and I'm not trying to nail you to anything, but we are looking to work with our partners, our community partners, if they're, and I know we have, um, a curriculum is, uh, is specific and those things that we need to do. But just to make that, get the point over, because they are asking.
Sure.
I guess I'm drilling. They are asking. They want, and I want to make sure that their community and that their faith-based students are covered as well. So I can tell them to, to stand by?
Absolutely, and I, I, I think it, individual, individual school will be looking to plan their own individual programs as part of the resources that we'll provide, uh, to them. So I would encourage them to, if they have a specific school with which they, uh, have some interest, that they touch base with those schools.
So in other, and we will be to, be able to accommodate all of our students that's finding the interest.
That is the goal. We, we were, we, we recognize that, you know, all students need to have some level of opportunity to have some support if they need it and, uh, seek it.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Felton, if I may, uh, and, uh, Dr. Rogers mentioned it briefly, but I wouldn't necessarily say to a community partner who has interest to stand by. I would say to a community partner who has some interest in this, to contact our Family and Community Engagement Office, our Title One office, and express that interest so that we're aware of it and can be incorporating that into our thinking.
And Dr. Spence, I do appreciate you using that language. I do, and, and that was one of the other departments that I wanted to bring up was the, uh, engagement part of that. So thank you so much, and I will do that. And I think that most of them have been in touch with, uh, Dr. Alexander and, and waiting to see what we were going to do. So thank you for that usage of that language. I like that. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin, and then, um, Mrs. Manning, are you in the queue?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's Mrs. Franklin and then Mrs. Williams.
Yeah, I just wanted to say Wanted to say how impressed I am that we have got such a, um, like, um, Ms. Felton said, of robust summer programs. That is just impressive that we are able to put that together, and I'm really excited about that. I'm excited to hear that we're getting the sports back. Um, now, where is this information going to be provided to the community in terms of, like, because there was something, um, there was registration for something starting April first. What was that? Uh, I believe it was the digital courses registration. Um, where is this information going to be provided to the community so they can start prepping their schedules?
So as soon as we have all, uh, parts We'll absolutely communicate via our website, through social media outlets with our schools. We'll send, um, uh, multiple pieces of information. Uh, our school councils will be sharing information with, with teachers. So it'll be, uh, multiple ways in which we communicate all of the opportunities for our students.
Okay, well, I just want to say, great job to you guys. You're, uh, it's, it's just so impressive.
That we have this available to the, the, the students and families this summer, so, great job.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Robertson. Okay, great news that our winter sports participated with no programs being placed on pause. That's excellent, excellent. Um, so now the fall sports are happening. I'm not, it's kind of hard to keep up because, so, um, so we have, so the only indoor fall sports we have are volleyball and cheer. Are we doing competition cheer? Is that going on?
Competition and Cylon cheer.
Okay, Cylon cheer. So those are the only two indoor. The others are outdoor. So, um, with the, with the indoor, there's no spectators at all.
No spectators.
And we've been asked this question, and I, and I still don't really understand. So who is making that decision? Is it the Department of Ed? Is it the governor? Is it VHSL? Because I just, you know, went to the soccer complex on my way here to pick up a uniform for my granddaughter who has a clinic there on Wednesday night. Parents go in there, parents watch, they play on the fields, two years old to, it looks like college. And so each player is allowed a parent in there. But yet, we can't have people in, in the same building for an athletic event. So who, so people ask me like, who, and everybody's wanting to point their fingers. So who is the ultimate decision-maker that, that rush soccer can have people there? And, and travel volleyball can people, have people there in that building, but a school system in that same building can't have a spectator?
Yeah, so the Virginia High School League is following, in this case, the guidance from the governor's office.
So the governor has made different rules for schools than he has for?
Yes, well, as far, as far as I know.
For, for, for like travel sports and advanced sports, all the soccer and volleyball that's happening with spectators. So that's a totally different rule than for the school system.
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure I clear that because we get that question a lot. So folks, you know, write, write to the appropriate people. Um, okay, so with the athletic fields, different groups have always had the, um, ability to use our fields. We've been very generous in sharing our baseball fields to different outside organizations who are having big tournaments here and, and, um, and our different fields for soccer. When is, when are our fields going to be open up to these groups?
Well, that's a good question, because right now, they're not open up to our groups for obvious reasons.
And, and who would dictate that? Like, you know, like a lot of these soccer teams, they can't practice now because they've relied on our fields at our elementary schools. A lot of these baseball organizations who bring tons of, um, money to our city, you know, because people come here to stay in hotels, they can't come because they don't have enough fields. So is there like, so who's going to make that decision?
Well, that recommendation would come out of my office, Office of Student Activities.
Okay, so but you don't have any like ballpark, like month, or, or if it's going to happen at all? Okay. All right, um. Okay, so the five-day in-person, or, or we're doing four-day obviously now. The five-day, I, and I, and I totally understand the reason, and we've been four-day in-person for almost a year now, I guess. So when, when are, are we foreseeing that we're going to be five days in the fall, or is it still too early to make that decision?
I don't believe that there's any wish at this point to be five days in the fall. I'm sorry, to be four days in the fall.
Okay.
I think our, our focus is
Our goal for the fall is to try to get five days back?
Yes, five days a week.
In person?
In person.
Okay, that's good to hear. Um, yeah, that's a goal. Okay. Okay, and then, um, I guess this is my last question for Mr. Freeman. Is he still here? He may, okay. So the COVID safety assessments in the high school, is that the teams? Yeah, what, what are those teams called again, or assessment teams?
They're called COVID Safety Assessment Teams.
Okay, COVID Safety Assessment Teams. Um, okay, so I, yeah, I, when we first heard about that, we, many of us, probably all of us, thought that it was a great idea. How exactly do they work? Do you just send them out randomly? Does the school know they're coming? How often do they go? Can you just kind of tell us about that?
Yes, so for the first, so the intent is to have them be random. And when I say random, so, so they're unannounced inspections or assessments. Um, but what we figured out is for the first one, it was really best to develop that relationship and kind of set the, the groundwork by having it be scheduled. So the first one's scheduled, and then after that, it's an unannounced inspection, and they can show up at any time. And we do them, uh, the, the goal is biweekly. Um, so the first week we did all elementary schools, we got all fifty-five done, and now we're settling into a routine, uh, to get schools biweekly. Now that we've got the secondary schools back in place, that's our focus for the next two weeks, like I talked about during our, uh, our assessment, uh, or during my, uh, my part of the presentation. So initial thought also was to have the same teams going back and assessing the schools so that way there could kind of be a developmental opportunity. And we're going to do that for a little while, but there may be a, a time where we look at it and say, you know what? It's time to get a fresh set of eyes, because once you've seen a progression go so far, you want to get a fresh set of eyes in, uh, that. We're not there yet, but we're talking about when, might, might that be a good time to do the transition? But right now, our focus is on making sure that we've assessed our secondary schools now that we've got kids back in the hybrid model.
Okay, and these assessments, I'm, I'm assuming a report is made and that is shared with the principal of that building, if, of, of the great stuff they're doing and of the areas of improvement.
Yes, so, uh, step one is when they go in the building, the lead's going to go in and, uh, let the principal know, hey, we're here. We're going to go do our assessment, and they come back and do a debrief and provide all the information that they learned during that assessment. And then we, that gets communicated to safe schools, and we collect that data, and we kind of, uh, take a look at the data and see how we're doing.
Okay, great. Well, I think it's a great idea, and it seems to be working. I think we'll get a lot of great information to be able to improve and move forward. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Owens?
Hi, thank you. Um, I also had a question about the COVID safety teams. Um, with the, I don't know who it goes, yeah, probably to Mr. Freeman. Um, I know that it looks like we're going to, you have a rotation, and I am pleased with how it's, you know, moving forward. I am wondering, are our COVID safety teams doing, uh, assessments in our non-school buildings that are occupied or just our school buildings?
Apparently, they're just in the school buildings. We're focused on making sure
That the retention instruction goes well.
Okay, is there, um, what would need to happen for, to, um, ensure that they're circulating, um, through all of our buildings? Okay, is there um, what would need to happen for, to um ensure that they're circulating um through all of our buildings? I think when uh we look at our dashboard and we see um that we do have COVID cases and situations in our like school administration building or our uh annexed buildings, and that when we know COVID is more uh transmissible between adults, that I think it's important for us to ensure that employees feel the same safety precautions and continuous improvement uh process that we're gonna be providing for our students.
Absolutely, um and so we'll
The secondary schools taken care of, and we make sure, so the priority, given the limited numbers of uh people that we have working on, is make sure we get the face-to-face instruction done. But we will definitely have that as a conversation of when's the right time to assess our other buildings in priority. That and that's likely gonna be when we at least get one look at all of our schools, um but we'll have that conversation.
Okay, um. And my other question, which is probably not a Mr. Freeman question, uh probably a Mr. uh Mr. Rob, Dr. Robertson. I might have missed it. With the uh football uh and outdoor sports, I heard the part about athletes are getting two tickets. Are, somebody already asked it, please forgive me. Are the parents of uh or are the athletes, the cheer athletes and our band participants getting tickets?
They are not. They are not, no.
Is there a way that we could have one or two games where football players get one ticket and the other sports that are there participating get a a prioritization opportunity to have a parent there at least one time during the season?
Absolutely, for a senior night, for sure.
Okay, and I I I understand that uh playing football is not something that you can watch uh your child do in a single state kind of at home. But for the the parents who are involved in these other fall sports, they they, you know, they letter, they are, they count as a sport. It does seem a little unfair that the other sports will get two tickets every game and we're we're trying to push for a one-time peek at your child for the other um, the other sports and saying that we hold them all on the same uh level of students and sports activities. So if there is any way that we can reduce down a little bit and have each football player have one parent or guest and allow for other sports participants to have a a parent there, uh I would be in support of allowing everybody to have one person rather than some get none. My thought.
Well, I think that's a good suggestion.
Ms. Owens, we'll take that back to the team.
Thank you.
If I may, I I'm sh- I'm sure it was mentioned, care that CARES funding was mentioned by one of you. But can we just, is there a ballpark, I mean, ballpark figure for the public to know? I mean, is 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 the bulk of the summer school funded by CARES funding? I'm not looking for a specific percentage, but
It's, it, there's a, there's a significant amount in the current operating budget. Something like a million and a half dollars for it. Is that accurate? The anticipation is that there will be an additional two to three million in costs associated with the expanded program that will come out of CARES Act funding.
I just thought it was important to point that out. Okay, thank you. I'm sure because of all the wealth of information that my colleagues can feel free to follow up with any of you. It's, it really has a lot of information to absorb and the reflection of a lot of work and preparation. Any further comments or questions from anybody or from our superintendent?
Uh only only comment for me um is a comment of gratitude. It is a comment of gratitude for you all, for your support for us to keep pressing forward with trying to find a way to get children back to school. It's a comment of gratitude for our leaders in our buildings, our leaders in our division, who have been working tirelessly to try to make that happen. I was in schools today, had the opportunity to talk to some of our leaders, some of our principals, assistant principals. So gratitude for the effort and planning that went in on their parts to get kids back to school. Gratitude on the part of our transportation teams for picking them up and getting them there. Gratitude for our teachers who are in classrooms with our children right now. Not right now, but you you know, um today and for the past couple of weeks with our little ones. I've been in our classrooms, I've been talking to our teachers. Yes, some of them have expressed their anxiety. We've had, I've had great conversations with them about that, and what do you need and how can we support you? And so many of them have have expressed how pleased they are to be back with our kids. And um it's similarly, when you ask those questions of kids, how do you feel? They're just so glad to be back in school. And so it's an expression of gratitude. I know it has been a long and a difficult and a challenging road to get to where we are today, with many bumps in the road along the way, you know, ups and downs and 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 everything in between. It's been one heck of a roller coaster for for this school division and every school division in in the country, quite frankly. But um just an expression of gratitude for your support and leadership and everybody else that made this happen today. It's 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 uh, I have said all along, and I mean this, we continue to be, despite all of the challenges, a beacon of hope in this community, and and I feel like that continues to be true. And I'm I'm very pleased with with the work and with our ability to keep pressing forward, and we know we're gonna do that, and we appreciate all the support and questions.
Thank, thank you, and I think I speak for others when I reach out to the community to say thank you for what, for your part in helping us to get to this point, and we have to stick with it together uh so that we continue to can continue to keep these kids in school. Cuz getting them there is the first step, but keeping them there is the next step. And and just all these mitigations for for our division um need to ex, you know, extend beyond. It's our, it's the everyday lives. Please continue to to just remain committed to that because it it is making a difference in terms of the the trending down in the numbers, but we wanna keep it that way. So we, this is just an appeal to the broader community to continue, let's all work together for this common cause. Thank you all, and on on that note, I think we are adjourned.